Okay, first out on the list was the special use permit and that has been withdrawn. So we'll move on to the second one. It's a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 21st, 2020, at 5:30 PM in the general district courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse. The purpose of the public hearing is to solicit public comment on a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. The Lee County Board of Supervisors has $860,000, $835.30 in unspent Federal Care Act funds, $2,274,821.50 in unspent American Rescue Plan PAC funds, all from the prior fiscal year. This is a total of $3,135,656.80 to be appropriated to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
We need to amend the first line of that from the December 21st.
2021.
Yeah, 2021 instead of 2020.
Okay. I got that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a quick comment on this. At the end of June 30th of 2021, that $860,000 and change was of the CARE Act fund that was received in prior years with unspent ballots. This just gives the board the legal authority to finish spending those funds before the December 31st deadline on that. And also the federal or the American Rescue Plan Act, the first half of those funds was received in June of 2021, which was prior fiscal year. So in order to be able to expend those funds this year, also be legal authority to do that, so that's the purpose for this public hearing. Any amendment of the budget over $500,000 does require public hearing, so that's the purpose of the hearing.
Do we have anybody here on that vibe? Okay, hearing not. Counter take motion.
For about time, I make a motion to propose amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, and it amounted $3,135,656.80.
Okay, got a motion to have a second?
I'll say it.
All those papers?
Aye, aye.
Any vote? Okay, we're going to do a little bit of switching around on the agenda, if that's okay, everybody. Probably work out better if we're kind of bump the delegations up and other constitutional officers will have our commissioner of revenue will talk. First on there, we've got the treasurer's report. Anybody got questions on the treasurer's report? Hearing not. Those on behind, they'll have a bunch of Chris Jones.
Good evening.
He's a.
I think your name's Bill Pollard. Hopefully, everybody can hear all right.
Just stood down a little.
Yeah. I can talk about all this.
Thought you wanted him.
All right, that's good. Thank you. Before I come before you tonight, of course, any questions, I'll be happy to answer that you all may have of me. But my main concern, I guess, is with the reassessment that notices went out here two or three weeks ago. Of course, as you're all fully aware, we've had to do some education to the public, you know, my beer, my office didn't conduct them, we didn't send it RFPs. We didn't interview people, we didn't hire people, you know, but I know you all know that, but I would like for that to be on record as far as me and my office goes. But we've been inundated with calls concerning these assessments and, you know, I tried to stay out of that because I didn't hire them, but in the grand scheme of things, I guess my office is responsible for maintaining that book in between reassessment cycles. So I started setting down and doing some statistical analysis and it's kind of troubling, you know, some of the uniformity issues that I see on this new reassessment. Now, again, right now, they're still handling appeals, so they still have time, and I encourage everybody to appeal to them, you know, I can't help you with it, but please make every effort to call them and give them an opportunity to rectify the situation. One of the issues, I guess, that I have, though, concerning it is I had went through, actually, my 2020 sales study that I compiled and sent to the state, and it was 237 transfers that were conducted in 2020, and this should have been the basis of their sales study since the field work should have been done in '21. Typically, from my experience, when I was working on that side of the desk, we'd done our sales study before we hit the field. Anyway, in doing the ratio study using the new amounts, the items in there as far as that measure statistical uniformity and things like it, those gaps seem to be wider than even our current numbers are, even though they're six years old. So, and I've got, and I can share all these with you off, you know, my copies of different things that I've done. So that's just some concerns that I have. You know, another issue that I see with it is the, out of the 230-some-odd sales that I vetted, I didn't find one of the land values were moved at all. I mean, land values were not moved, and that's only about a 1% of the total. We have about 21,000 parcels. To me, that just seems like not really an equitable assessment, but that's just based on what I'm seeing. But some other items that I've also discovered are sale towers that were erroneously assessed to landowners. Those items, most of those are assessed under public service corporation. They actually, the State Corporation Commission actually assesses a great deal of those. Some of them we do assess locally, but there's a separate book for those, and so essentially, when he's picked them up and put them on these real estate parcels, they're going to be double taxed if they don't appeal, and of course, then it'll be up to somebody to clean it up. So it will be assessed to the companies like AT&amp;T or whoever, and then if you assess it to the landowner, then they would also receive a tax bill, so that's an issue. We've seen several burned buildings that have skyrocketed like they've been repaired, but they haven't. We've seen double wides assessed with multiple rates on similar properties, it's not really uniform. We've seen other kind of high, I guess you'd say, high-quality structures, like some of the better-built structures in the community, some of those assessments have been slashed in half. So there's no real uniformity or rhyme or reason when you discuss the cost approach being a basis for the skyrocket on the residential side, but yet on the commercial side, some of those have tripled as well, but some of them have been cut in half. There's no real uniformity there. Another issue that I see is we have roughly 9,300 accounts that have dwellings situated on the more habitable structures out of the 21,000, so that's roughly half. If the land values haven't been touched, any, so you're going to sort of see that about half the properties are 11,000 or so, will have the exact same assessment as they have before. The other problem with that on the 9,300 that do have habitable structures, the assessment firm, when I talk to them, they're trying to use tables to set everything up and streamline like depreciation and things of that nature, which would work in a homogenous type area where your structures are the same quality, the same age, the same design, the same square footage. We don't live in that kind of an area. You know, I mean, you may have a $50,000 house, a $500,000 house, $200,000 house, a $2,000 house, right next to one another. So it's kind of hard to apply tables with a broad stroke. Really, I feel that you have to, you know, inspect each property individually and, you know, I guess, I don't know, I feel that with these 9,300 accounts of the habitable structure, I guess where I was going with that, anything that didn't have a year built in there, because these records are old, you know, it's been passed down from years. I inherited them, of course, we build upon them, but if it didn't have a year built in the line on our tax record, in order for them to populate a table, they entered 1972 as a year. So, you know, there could be a house that's 100 years old, it could be one that's 20 years old, if there wasn't a year built, they populated 1972 and signed a depreciation rate based on that. That's one reason you see the structures kind of out of whack. But we did a query in our office and we noticed that out of the 9,300, 3,700 homes now have a year built of 1972, so that shows 40% of our homes in the county now say they're built in 1972, which I think we could all agree is incorrect. To me, not having the year on there, I would rather not have it as having something incorrect on the card, so I do have an issue with that. You know, there's several other things I'd be happy to discuss more, but, you know, like I said, I hope everybody will take the opportunity to appeal to the assessor and go through that process, but it's something, there are some troubling numbers there and kind of like with the land values, that's nothing that the board of equalization can fix, you know, that can't be fixed in that process, so that's something else to keep in mind, but I just want to speak to that, and if you had any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and so I brought copies of the stats that I run, if you all would like like that, or you can look at them and then I can answer questions once you've had time to look at it in more detail.
I don't have a question, Chris, if I do want to comment, I don't like any, what the hell are we doing? And I'll tell you this, too, they flew three drones over my house after dark, and that's how this is my property.
Well, and to speak on that, I can see instances where drones could be a useful tool. I think if you had inaccessible property, say there's a cabin up on the side of a mountain, say there's something that road's washed out, it's not navigable, you can't get to it, I could understand it as a tool. I don't think that's, in my opinion, that shouldn't be the sole basis of your inspection, and to me, it's no substitute for boots on the ground. Just make shoe leather and something, it's hard to, you know, you can't quite take the place of that, so that's, yeah, I kind of feel the same way.
In years past, you know, I wasn't there, but my wife said, one of the past reassessments, they knocked on the door, asked her, how many bedrooms you got, how many bathrooms you got, if the basement finished, they had no clue.
Well, and that's a thing you know.
What I understood was they took one picture of the front and one overhead, and if it's dark, I don't know how you'd get anything out there. They don't have these floodlights on them like these helicopters do. Besides that, you know, they don't even know how much land there.
Right, and I, yeah, I agree, I just don't think there's any substitute for boots on the ground. When I worked in that line of work prior to running for commissioner, I worked on two reassessments, one sitting in Orton, one in Russell County, and we, you know, the way I was taught to do it, we visited every property, if people weren't home, we left a notice on the door, but you would talk to people and you could gather information, you know, you could, if you had a question, you could ask them, and you could come to some sort of resolve there and get that information from just taking a picture, you know, that's kind of limited on the information that you can gather.
A lot of homes have done that, they've been ten times or nothing. Had that few dead two bathrooms in your house.
A lot of homes, you know, that we have in the area, they may even appear somewhat in better shape from an exterior inspection, you could drive them by, but if you walk up on that house and you go around and look and see, you know, it could be completely gutted on the inside, you know, just because somebody mows the yard and stuff outside to keep your neighborhood from growing up, doesn't necessarily mean the house is even in livable condition. That's, we actually had one in Woodway that we went out on, and I guess it's something else that bothered me, is we try to make very thorough notes on anything we go out and visit, and it almost seems like a lot of these notes, there was no adherence to that whatsoever in their process. But anyway, the one we went to, it was a house that had been burned, it's severe damage, and we reduced the assessment, it was assessed, I don't know, $20,000, $30,000, it was an older house, and we reduced it down to like $6,000 or $7,000 because it could be repaired, it wasn't a complete loss, but it had significant damage, and they'd never done anything to it, and when they got the reassessment notice, I think it went up to $39,000. You know, just instances like that, to me, just sort of speaks to the quality of the inspection.
The one that you're talking about, I talked to the owner today, he said the front door was burned out, literally, you could walk in, the windows were all busted out, and if they would have walked up within 100 yards, they could have seen, you know.
Well, there's another one, an apartment building in Pennington, and it's kind of a similar deal. We reduced the, we went out, made a site visit, we reduced the assessment based on the condition, the structure burning. It was over 100, we reduced it down to like 30, and then they come through and they did make a notice, the only note I've seen that's been made, but it says, appears to be repaired from fire damage, and they raised it to, I think, about $150,000 or $60,000, and it's not had any repairs done. So I just, you know, I wanted to stay out of it, I guess, because, you know, I wasn't involved in it, but I feel like I've been drugged into it to a certain degree, and I feel like I have a duty to the constituents I serve to come and at least tell you what I'm seeing, and, you know, I don't birth this child, I've just left the rocket for six years, and it's going to be kind of like an ugly baby you have to nurse for six years.
With your experience in this deal, Chris, do you feel like this was a fair assessment? Was it done correctly?
I don't feel it was done fair or is equitable at all, in my opinion. Now, I haven't probably done as much statistical analysis as the folks that conducted it, you know, and I'm sure they maybe could explain if you could ever see them, they've never stepped foot in my office, I don't see how you could do a reassessment, never come to my office, but they've never, never darkened the doors, so they might could speak to that, you know, with better clarity, you know, I won't speak for them, but in my opinion, you know, it's not the best product.
In my opinion, they hired a bunch of drone operators, didn't have a clue what the price of property is, or?
Well, I think they tried to use computer technology just to kind of blanket, you know, we're applying these rates to this class of property, and not really take it as much into consideration the individual inspection of the property, because you and I both know, you could have a house that was built 20 years ago, they could have been identical when they were built, but they could be worth significantly different now based on, if one house may not have had anything done to it, and the other house could have had many updates through the years, so the effective age of those homes are quite different. So, you know, I don't think that was taken into consideration.
Shouldn't that have been in the contract?
Well, you know, when you have somebody to do an assessment, typically, that's part of their duties, you know, to do that. You know, I think that the system that we have, it is an older system, and I know that's been an issue that the assessor has expressed to us, but I guess, you know, my feeling is even though maybe some of the technology we have is older, it will work. I mean, it's worked for many years, but it's set up and designed based on the individual inspection of the home, and not a blanket just spread it across and throw numbers into an algorithm and it spits out, you know, data. Power system's not set up for that, it's set up for the individual inspection, you key everything in individually. So I think that's part of why we're seeing so many inconsistencies.
We don't always pretty consistent, everybody.
Well, no, there's actually a couple, I know there was one house I was looking at in Dryden that it sold for about $50,000 more than what we had on it, it's actually one of the nicer homes in Dryden, and we had it assessed at $170,000, it sold for $225,000 or $230,000, and then they backed it up to $150,000. So, yeah, there were some winners and losers involved with it, but I don't.
There's more losers. I had one phone call, I did that one phone call, this lady, she was elderly, and she was mad, y'all turn it back.
Yeah, so there's, I didn't get any more of them, but, yeah, I would encourage everybody to at least, you know, if they had any questions, to reach out to the numbers on the notice, call them, email them, and let them know so they can address, because that book has not been turned over to us yet, until they sign the book, it really isn't the property of the county, it's still a working document, and I know they actually told people they had come to my office and I could give them the information, and we could view it, I can see, you know, the information, but I don't feel I have the legal authority to distribute that information because that document hasn't been signed for it. To me, it still is working, it's a working document, so I've been very reluctant to do that.
On the tickets they sent out, the assessment tickets, at the bottom, send this and your other information to this address, but what's the other information they're going to send?
Right.
And what is it, they don't know.
Yeah, I guess it would just be reasons that you feel it's not done correctly, you know, a lot of properties, I could think of a longer list of reasons why, for the ones I've seen, but, yeah, I would just try to do the best you can towards describing maybe any inadequacies with the property, you know, anything that's maybe, you know, a need to repair or something like that, and just let them know, hey, this property's in this kind of condition, we feel it's unfairly assessed, but they should be able to provide you a copy of the working papers, and they keep directing people to us, but I just feel that it's not actually property of the county yet until they sign that book and turn it to us, and I just don't feel I would have the legal authority to distribute that, so I did want to at least clarify, I guess, why I'm taking that position.
One of the things, Chris, that you referred to about how they, you know, have no clue how they gave them the equation or yet, you know, I requested that they sent somebody from their firm here to answer questions tonight on that, and apparently, they didn't see chance to do that, so.
Chris, I had one thing, if I agree that they can until the end of the month, sign the book and turn it over to you.
Yes, that's all right. I think we're going to get those appeals, then, and they need to do it.
As quickly as possible, yeah, I think on the appeals, I think it lists 2 o'clock on December 31st as a cutoff, that they'll take anything, that'll leave them a whole lot of time there, but.
Three hours.
Yeah, that.
Well, actually, he, in an email, I'm sure it was Chris this afternoon, an email he sent me a couple days ago, his schedule showed that he was going to do that cutoff at 2 o'clock, and he intended to finalize everything in what's referred to as Company 22, that's the program that he's working in, by 6:00 PM that afternoon. That's after business hours for us, and he's supposed to have that, the tax book signed off of him and filed in the clerk's office and a copy in the commissioner's office by December 31st. Typically, December, that date means close of business on that date, so he's even extending the time that he's saying he's going to complete it till beyond that.
And he can ask the circuit court for an extension, but he's not asked for that?
Not that I'm aware of.
And that's the only entity that can grant him an extension to circuit court, yeah, or me, or nobody else under that has come through court.
Chris, the appeal also requires a notarized letter, is that normal?
This is the first appeal process I've ever seen that's been done this way. Typically, you would have the assessors, they would have some type of office space situated in the courthouse or somewhere, you would call, make an appointment, if you wanted a question, you would come down, bring your information, they would sit down and discuss it with you. You know, like I said, this is just unlike any process I've ever been involved with on either side of the desk. When we were, worked for company conducting assessments or the last reassessment that was done here in Lee County, never seen an appeals process quite like this.
Never been that way in.
If I may say something, I think that that's only the notarized letter if you have representation. I don't think it requires it if you're just noting the appeal.
Mr. Chairman, there's no way we can keep accurate minutes of the meeting when people are calling out from the audience, we don't know who they are, we don't know where the questions are coming from.
That's why I was waiting till Chris finished talking there, and if anybody's got any questions, need to come to the front, address your questions from the front. Questions to the speaker come from board supervisors or.
Do you want me to approach everybody, Chair Lee's with you now?
Yeah, I'd like to. And then feel free, any questions, anybody's got, you know, come up.
I think I made about five or six copies, that's actually the ratio study from the state that just came, actually, yesterday. This is across all classes of properties, the information I compiled, this is Class 10 properties, Class 10 is anything that's situated in town, so it'd be Town of Johnsville, Town of Pennington, these are Class 20 properties, that's anything that's rural, that's going to be up to 28 acres or so, that's what that's, I don't get the sense of. There's other classes, there's 30s, which are multifamily, 40s are commercial and industrial, 50s are up to 100, 20 to 100 acres, and 60s are over 100 acres. I didn't really have time to compile that, and most of the sales are in the 20s, the 10s and 20s in town, and then the up to 20-acre parcels outside of town, so that's where I focused all my energy. They're all paired together.
Yeah, it's all right here. If anybody else got any questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Now, on our, we'll move on to public expression, but we're going to use our delegations, our first two delegations to come up and speak first, and everybody will have their change after that. Greg or Donnie, whichever one y'all want.
Chairman, I'll remove the mask because I didn't leave it on, so. I appreciate the opportunity, and Mr. Chairman and members of the board, first, I want to start off by saying and cautioning everybody, yes, the board supervisors simply hired the firm to come in and do this, we understand this is not anything that you all have done, I'm not here to chuck fun to you all or anything else, I understand this is not, you're all's problem, this is, in a way, you're a problem, and it's not caused by you. And so with respect to this, what I simply wanted to do, Chris talked about a number of things that I really wanted to address, I think in looking at it, I think it's 58.13201 or something, it's something along those lines, it talks about the reassessments to be at 100% of fair market value. When I spoke with the appraisers at Bright Mines, I actually got through to them, talked to them, what I was told, and I think it's important kind of to relay that, is, is that the way it was explained to me, he first started off by saying that he had gone through the board to talk to, and presented a number of comps that they were looking at. A comp would be for a sales comparison sort of approach, if I'm going to come up and appraise your property, I want to look at what are other sales in the neighborhood of like similar properties, and I'm going to compare it to that, and then I'm going to make adjustments based upon square footage, whether or not there's sewer and water to it, whether or not there's different things. And he started off by kind of saying that, then he referred to what was a cost approach, which he indicated that they used. From my understanding, the cost approach is the least favorable of all of the approaches that have been used by appraisers. Within this, what he indicated to me was, I asked him specifically, was drone technology the only thing that was done? He indicated that there were some people that were here, he didn't indicate exactly specifically whether they ever came on the property, because I asked him, I said in prior assessments, as Chris said, I've always had a little tag or something that's been put on my door, something that's told me, we've been up here, we've looked at your property, I'll have somebody knock on the door, asking us some little things about the property and stuff like that, and my wife works at home, so it's. And my wife works at home, so it's something that, most of the day, she's going to be there at the house. We never saw anybody. We, we never saw anything. We never had a little tag. But he did indicate that at least on a couple of things that they did go up and approach it. In my discussions with people, I've not heard a single person that has told me that their property was raised anything, which leads me to believe that they've used the cost value approach. Okay? The cost value approach would be, how much could I rebuild my property for? At the time that this assessment was done, it was at a time when lumber prices were through the roof. I don't think there's anybody here that would say that they probably haven't seen lumber prices as high as they've ever been. And so to rebuild my house now during this window when lumber is sort of short and the prices are skyrocketing, I think is extremely unfair, and I think it's an extremely unreliable way of looking at this. I think that's something that the board should consider when, when looking at this. In addition, one of the things that I do a lot as an attorney is I do a lot of different things where we'll do title searches for people, we do deeds, and we do, we have a closing company that I work with out of Bristol. The number of properties that we've been dealing with over the last probably six months to eight months has been enormous because people are buying properties rather than going out and building, just simply because of skyrocketing prices of what it would take to build. And so for them to use the cost value approach, I think, was totally wrong. I think that what it does is it punishes anybody who has some type of an improvement on their land versus land that has nothing that's beside of it. In other words, if there's nothing on the land, a cost value approach would yield nothing. It would, it would basically remain the same. But I do point out with Chris, there are different things that just seem so inconsistent. I don't see how in the world anybody would say that they would offer $8.3 million for the old, for the school board building, which are the three buildings up there. Obviously, that is where they have, and this is what he indicated to me, that they would take square footage, they would plug it into a computer, and then the computer would spit that number out as to what they felt like that it was. Obviously, you're going to get a tremendous amount of square footage from a building like that. If you're going to try to rebuild that building, you're going to have a brand new building at the end of the day, rather than having almost a 100-year-old structure that's up there on the property. I simply think that those just made this approach that they used, I, I don't see how in the world that they could salvage it to the fact that it doesn't take into account any at all of the land and what the land would have appraised. My home went up $100,000. I don't think there's any way that I could get a quarter of a million dollars out of my home. So that was something that was very sort of personal to me. But I've even heard people that have had it up to 230 some thousand on a home, that have had businesses go up anywhere from 400 to 600,000 dollars. And it just doesn't seem fair with that. The other thing I would point out is, as Chris said, the inconsistencies. I have a relative that lives very near to me, about three tenths of a mile from my house, and their property actually decreased on a house built about the same time that mine, while mine went up $100,000 within a neighborhood of about three tenths of a mile. Both of us live very close over to the prison. I wouldn't see why there would be a lot of difference. The topography of the land is roughly the same. Their land went up zero, the structure went down. My land went up zero, and my structure went up $100,000. And I just don't see, and I know the board's going to do the right thing on this, I know the board's concerned with, with some of the inconsistencies on it, but I certainly think that these are things that I would just encourage the board to look at when you're looking at this, as to whether or not to take it. Because I just don't think that the values that they used, entering on a computer, flying a drone over, taking some pictures of my house. Another thing was, is when I called, I left my property ID number, the tax map number, I left all my information. The guy was very nice when he called me back, but at the time that he called me back, he didn't know what kind of siding I had on my house. He didn't know what style of house that I had. Now, maybe he was just sloppy and he didn't pull the card or anything else, but it just led me to believe that this was just a very sloppily done process. And, and again, I thank the board for the time, and certainly if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer your questions. But I appreciate the time, I appreciate what the board's doing and everything else. And at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Edwards unless the board has any questions.
Did I hear you write up, you said that the appraiser said that he gave us his comps? He said that he went over, I think he said he went over comps with Mr. Poe, with Mr. Jones, and maybe members of the board. I don't recall exactly who he said.
I just wanted to clarify that. We didn't give him comps.
I, I didn't think you probably did.
He emailed the commissioner and he copied me with his sales study, which typically they just file that with the commissioner's office because it's their product, and that's what guides them in valuation. It's not something that is typically up for debate. I've never known us to have a debate with, with an assessor over his sales study because that's his product. He does the research on it. So we just put it in the files. And it was only an emailed copy anyway.
But what I, the, the main thing I was pointing out with that was, he starts off with like, I've got comps and I've got all this stuff, and then it went totally into a computer program and into a fact that it was a cost value approach that he was saying. And so even if he provided the board comps, I don't think he used those according to the conversation that I had with him.
I've never made, never talked to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to provide me the speaker tonight. You know, we're all my friends, I've known you for years and everything, and this is something that came up that, you know, I got the letters, I didn't pay any attention to them. Mr. Williams called and said it went up $100,000, and I was just laughing about it. And I got mine out. The first one I saw was the land next to me. It'd go up $9,000. Next one I pulled out was my house. It went up $132,200. Now, I know the price of lumber has gone up, but the only thing I've done to my house in the past several years was replace two rodent boards on the deck. So those deck boards are worth, what, $61,100 each? 62,000, somewhere along that line, and I was just sort of in shock. Then I saw my neighbor, mentioned it to him, and he said, well, we got it. We thought that, my wife was mad, thought that was the link with tax notices. And I opened one up, said, I stayed the same. I said, have you checked? He stopped me the next day, and his house had gone up $222,000. I thought I was in the lead there for a while, for the big loser lead. So the first thing I did was looking at it. I came up and I asked to get a copy of the contract, and the minister's office very graciously provided me one. And the first thing I saw, and I shook my head, was the name of the company, it was Bright Minds. I'm still trying to struggle over that one. Then we started asking around. And after talking to Mr. Williams, and I'm going to go into a bunch to cover up, but he went through the cost approach, which they said they were using, and cost approach is normally only effective on a new construction, because that's what it is when you build it right then. Then the other type of approach for fair market value is income approach, and that's basically for business. The cost approach is the least effective on anything else except new construction. Comparable sales approach is the one you use. And I started looking around. My neighbor next to me just sold his house, about a certain dwelling space area is a little bit bigger, they added on to it, five acres or something, for $292,000. But, you know, but it was bought by people not from here. They're coming up from Florida. A lot of folks are moving in who have no idea what property goes forward in Lee County. But on everything else, no land value went up. I have a lot with a friend, I expected it to go up. It didn't go up. It's an acre lot, it's been leveled, it has a paved street adjacent, running along the edge of it, it's got a paved eaves coming into it, and it has public water and public sewer. It's valued at $9,000, the same as that little hillside next to me I have, that they value at $9,000. I never saw a drone, always before, they would come, leave something on the door, and once, if I knew them, I'd come in, give them a stare or something else, and we'd chat. The, what their work done was extremely, unsurprising in my words, in looking at it. If you go around, there's no round of reason. I know a person who has two rental houses, probably maybe far as far as the walls of this courtroom. Identical homes, if they're attached together, it could be a duplex. One went up 3,000, the other one went up, I think I was told, 13,000. Nothing has been done to them. Now, I know, looking at this, they're still under contract, they're not finished. I know you cannot, and I set this same side tonight, that cannot be done. You're going to have to give them a chance before you refuse it. And as far as I'm concerned, I would hope that you would have given them an opinion. I don't think they've earned their money. I told one of my friends and the appraiser that I was coming here tonight, probably cutting myself in the throat over the legal fees that I can get and the appraisal fees he could get if we had to go to court and fight these in court to get them set aside. But I don't think it's fair to the public, and I know you are wondering what's fair to the public. Look at the contracts, read it. I think if you go through there, there's certain standards that they have to do. I don't think they met those standards. I think if you go through there and they get finished, I think you'll find things that's going wrong. You need to bide your time, and I ask the public to bear, to go on. I mean, it's going to take some time to get this done, but they can get it done, and I know they will. And if they don't, come and see me, we'll sue them, okay?
Amen.
But let's try to take this approach very seriously, go through it, jump through your hoops. When you get to the end, I think you're going to be able to say, this is not done, it's unacceptable, and just void the contract totally, because that's what needs to be done. It needs to be just kicked out. I think, you know, I think another county has done it. You go through and you start talking to people, appraisal's gone up. I mean, you know, Mr. Williams is right, when I heard what, this place up here, over $8 million now for the old Jonesville Elementary School Institute, that needs to be torn down.
And they didn't fly over top of it. They complained at the roof.
You know, that's the thing. I know that someone told me they had an old house out in the field, it had fallen in. It went up $15,000. You know, and I, you know, I just can't understand what's going on. And it seems like, you know, I will tell you this, my house is a pretty nice house, I'll admit, it's their opinion. I have a friend who has the same style house that I've got, probably 2,000 to 3,000 square more, or square thousand more feet in it, more bedrooms, more living space. They pay people to come and spray their yard, get the dandelions out. They're at, everything's pristine, landscaping's perfect, they have a swimming pool, they have outbuildings. My house is assessed more than theirs. I just don't see it. And I think there's just so much stuff in this that when you go through it and this contract, you will be able to pick at you, just this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. But I beg you, don't do anything hastily. Take your time, jump through the hoops, and make sure that when you say this is wrong, it will stick. Thank you.
I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that will disagree with anything, anybody out there in that audience has got to see. Because we know what's happening here is wrong, is my right.
Thank you, board members, for your time. I, if you don't mind if I speak up?
I'll just state your name.
My name is Anthony Apurges. I just moved here from Seattle, Washington. I've been here 90 days.
What's your name again?
Anthony Apurges. I bought a house not too far from there. It's a little house, not very much. So I came here, I have a different approach. I like, I'm glad all these guys are, everybody's come out, and there's some, some important things that need to be talked about in this tax thing. I got, interestingly enough, I came because of what's, what was supposed to happen, or I thought was going to happen on the driving loop, right, that the beginning, that the withdrawal, that's why I showed up. I, I didn't even, didn't even dawn on the, the letter that I got, the property tax. I'd like to address that for these people as well. So I came here, I bought a place that I think is well overpriced. Now, I don't know much about real estate. I've only owned about eight or 10, probably in my lifetime, 20 or 30 pieces of property. So I don't know a whole lot about property. I've only built a few of my own pieces of property with my own hands. I came here, I overpaid for a piece of property. I actually, my banker fought probably over a month to try to figure out what the value was of this particular property that I bought. Fought, was willing to back away from it because their board president got involved and said, we can't get an appraiser to appraise this place. So I challenge you guys to look at when you're, this, this stuff that's going on with the appraisals on all these folks' properties and the attorneys that obviously are going to chase this down, is that I challenge, the economic stuff that's going on here, I think is much more important in terms of the wages dictates, as much as you could say the cost of lumber and it's going up and what it costs to build a property today, I think we all could agree that the cost of materials today is, is way overblown, right? We can, I'm sure we could all agree with that. So when it comes back down, what's the real value of your property? What's the real value of your car? So I think it's important to, to also discuss the part, the little, the little piece of the fact of what, what are the wa, what, what are the wages here in Lee, in all of Lee County? And how much can they really support in terms of all these, you know, these house values going up? Like, like mine came, and the notice came, said it, like it doubled in value, right? Now, I paid, I way overpaid for the property, but I way overpaid because moving from Seattle, what I would have bought the house for in Seattle would be like quadrupled. But that doesn't mean that everybody would do that. I only did it because I saw the fact that I could have bought a house in Seattle. So that's, you know, I had some conversations with some local people that have said, you know, it's kind of hurting the area. But that's not my fault, right? It's not my fault that, that, you know, that the banker couldn't, they couldn't figure out how to come up with an appraisal for this particular property. And I thought, well, so there's some real problems, but to the board members, I, I would hope that you guys would all look at, the guys, the ladies, and gentlemen, I would hope that you'll take the time to look at what the wages support in this area, because I do think that the more people that come in here, you'll start forcing these people that can't afford, you know, the, the taxes to go up, you'll force them out of their houses, into the streets. And if you guys don't believe me, call me up. I'll, I'll fly you one of the two years, I'll fly you to Seattle. And you look at what's going on out there, all the people in tents, and all the stuff that's going on out there is horrific. So anyway, I appreciate your, your time, all of you, it's very much a lesson. Thank you for, for having me.
Again, I want to call just for one thing. I forgot to mention that we do have a three-minute time limit, so that's why you heard the buzzer going.
I did, yeah, I'm sorry.
You weren't trying to run you off or anything?
Oh, I appreciate you guys just listening to me. Thank you guys for having us.
I apologize for not mentioning that, but I'll go ahead and say that we limit our time for again.
I'm sorry, my name is Roxy Clark.
Me, just unfortunately, we didn't like to leave you.
And I'm very short, I'm also completely deaf in this ear, and mostly deaf in this ear. So I haven't heard anything that was said. I sat up as close as I could trying to, and I, at any rate, I got three tax assessment notices on one piece of property that I way overpaid for. Came from Palm Beach County, Florida to get away from COVID because it was horrible, and I didn't want my daughter getting sick. So I came up here, I couldn't find anything. Last winter, in December last year, we bought it first of January. I know from what I've learned since we've been here, that I paid probably two or three times what it was worth. And now, but I did pay the tax bill that was overpriced then. It was more than my property in Palm Beach County, Florida, and now I get three. And I don't understand any of it. Tried to call people, can't get through any, to anyone to talk to, and I can't hear them if I did. I need... You said you'd listen to complaints, I'm sorry if I'm complaining to the wrong people. I just, I mean, I can't frame her up here and try to, try to save her from COVID and then lose the house because I can't get a damn tax bill. And that pretty much worked out. I don't even know who to talk to. We, we come over to this courthouse three times, there was no one to talk to. I finally paid the tax bill, the one little guy in a treasurer's office with a, with a check, but I didn't know who he was. There's a phone number on this thing, I've tried to call, nobody answers it. I would like to save my house, and I can't buy another property? I would like to save my house, and I can't buy another property, I can't leave, and I may not be able to stay. And I find that disgusting. Because I paid three hundred thousand dollars for a piece of property with a house that was built in nineteen thirty-two. And it's all I got to say, except it's very frustrating. Somebody please tell me some human that I can speak to, and where to go to do it. I'll be there.
Well, the only, the only number that you can speak to as far as is on there.
I can't hear you, sir.
He said that the number, the number to call is the one on the assessments, and I did call.
Yep. There's nothing we can, we can't answer for, I mean, we have no.
That is the number they have to call, that's what the discussion is about.
But we can't get it, we can't talk to anyone.
Let, let me make a suggestion, I would, I would send them an email, because I want to have proof that I've tried to reach out to them.
I will.
I, I would suggest sending them an email.
You can contact them via email as well.
If they'll provide me with the name and number.
The agriculture, the office that we paid the tax bill to sent us over to the FDA office to talk to someone there. And the people there told me that they had used a drone to survey my property. And that's the only thing that was looked at on my property, was a drone.
If you give me a name and a phone number to contact you, before you leave, I will, I'm, I'm talking to your daughter.
Okay, yep.
I will submit it to the assessor, he has said that if we have a list of anybody who says they can't get through on the phone, if I'll send it to him, he will contact you. Whether he will or not, I can't say, but that's what he is told. So if you'll, if you'll just write down.
I love the voicemail.
A, a name and phone number, I will email it to him tonight.
I'm just helpless, I don't know.
And, and ask him to give you all a call. And, uh, do you have, if you have the, the tax mouth numbers, if you'll just jot those down, get them off the cards, that she's got to process.
Yeah, if you'd like to, hey, ma'am, if you'd like to just go ahead and do that, and let somebody else go. Whoever else wants to come up next. Hearing none, we'll, uh, we'll move on. Does anybody from the board want to? Have any comment on what's been wrong for?
I'll comment on that, that property, we will address this, take care of it.
We click this now. Yeah, I think most people, I, I, I mean, we're all homeowners too, so we got the same type of stuff, and I think, like Donnie said, I, I, I'm in the same situation where I'm at. My house got jumped up a bunch. A house two doors down from me, built at the exact same time, almost pretty much identical house, theirs actually dropped. So, I wait.
Same here, uh, my house went up a hundred and some thousand dollars, I've got a rental house that went up three hundred and some percent. I, I feel it too, it's ridiculous, I'm ready to sue if I have to. Uh, the, the board, I think, kinda has an idea what it wants to do. Of course, what we say is on the record, and we may be in litigation with these people over the, uh, the money that still owes, I don't want to say too much that they can use against us, but I think that everybody in the room is on the same page.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, actually, you skipped departmental reports to move into public expression, so just for the record, we just need to mention departmental reports to get, so that we cut the.
Yeah, you did, I did that.
I'll move in.
Yeah. We went over the treasure, I asked about the treasure report.
Uh, that's under constitutional options, I'm talking about departmental reports, which is just written, the report's in your packet, but.
Sorry, I thought, I thought.
So we cut it.
Okay, anybody got any questions on departmental reporting? Uh, well, sorry about that. Approval of minutes, November sixteen, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting, and November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, recess meeting. Okay, got a motion, that's second, all those in favor? Okay, next, we got county administrative reports, payroll warrants have been issued, and approval of dispersals. Okay, got a motion to get the bills paid. And second, all those in favor? Okay, we've been through the delegations, uh, that's under old business and, uh, parking lots and structure.
That's just, that's an old business item, I just wanted to keep it out there. Uh, we did not, we're not able to get the, uh, design build ordinance ready for this month's meeting. I finally a, was able to flesh out through the state website, uh, there's a, there's a statement, it's very, a, a very general statement in the, uh, state code building with design build about having policies and procedures adopted by the Secretary of Administration, but you couldn't find, I've seen, where I finally found them under Department of General Services, under the Building and Engineering section or whatever, so we do have all that file, we just didn't have time to put the ordinance together in order to be able to advertise it tonight. But I think we should be able to have that ready for the January eighteen, that's our
Anybody got anything on that? Okay, moving on to new business, uh, we got board appointments. Lots of pie in office, all to you. Two of them.
I thought the principal, he, I, he's never called me back yet, or hasn't.
You all make a motion to table?
Yeah, and the other one, I don't, it's, that lady, I'm not willing to.
I was really not sure, to be honest, I was gonna ask, would you table both of those?
I think, I'll make a motion to table both of them.
Yeah, you got a motion, you can say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next, we got two walk, drive, I see, drive water department, drive water authority to, uh, to appoint.
I, uh, move that we reappoint two people.
Do you want to vote?
Yeah.
That's your motion, can you guys say?
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next, we got, uh, Public Service Authority, uh, two appointments there, one District Four, one District Five. I'd make a motion to reappoint Roger Gates in District Five.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Make a motion that we reappoint one in District Four. Very aggressive? Yes, definitely. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next, we got redevelopment Housing Authority, District Three.
Make a motion to reappoint.
Second.
Got a motion, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next, we got Regional Industrial Facilities Authority.
Make a motion to appoint Richard Johnson, our DDA Director.
Got a motion, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next, we got, uh, Social Services showing two appointments, one District One and one District Three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to reappoint Wade Wilson.
Okay, got a motion to reappoint Wade Wilson, got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
I'll abstain on both of those, because I'm on that board with those people.
Yeah.
Motion to reappoint Albert Tad, District Three.
Okay, got a motion. So, in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Second.
Okay, next, we got, uh, Southwest Virginia Mercy Medical Services.
Mr. Chairman, that's Free to Airs, uh, I've been trying to reach out to her, see if she wouldn't be back on, I'd like to table that for the next meeting, please.
Okay, motion to table, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Next, we got Southwest Virginia Workforce Investment Board.
Make a motion to reappoint Larry Moe.
Okay, you got a motion to reappoint Larry, can second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, looks like we got an appointment and an alternate for, uh, Upper Tennessee River Roundtable.
Mr. Chairman, I'm generally Lambor, uh, reappointed her last year, I think it was last year or the year before that. I reached out to her, having her back from her, so I'd like to table that one, unless somebody else has somebody that they want to put on there, but the alternative, uh, I didn't reach out to them yet, because I may have to reach out to them about taking the, the main position, if personnel, if doesn't do, so I'd ask to table that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next, we got Sound System Proposals.
Chairman, we, uh, advertised for proposals for new sound systems, they were due November twenty-third, we only received a proposal from BIS Digital, uh, they submitted two proposals, uh, basically the same as what we had gotten quotes from them before, a basic quote of twelve thousand, six sixty-three, twenty-three, the option one quote, which has more capability for future expansion, fourteen thousand, eight oh seven, ninety-eight. Uh, the basic quote would provide new microphones, speakers, wiring, insulation, it includes a software system that will record audio, and could be expanded for video capability. The option one quote includes everything in the basic, plus additional capabilities that allow greater control of the system, uh, the use of ethernet cabling, which is easier to manage, and expansion of the system in future, uh, for video or presentations is also good here with the, uh, option one system. Previously, the committee that, uh, was appointed to review the quote selected the option one as preferred system.
Where the, where's this, uh, company located?
He's, uh, locally, he, uh, his local office is in Hattie, it's a nationwide company.
Okay. Make a motion to accept option one quote.
Second.
Okay. Eight oh seven, ninety-eight. Yeah, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got, uh, Scott County Telephone Broadband, projected invoice.
We've received two invoices from, uh, Scott County Telephone for October and November progress billing on the distance learning project and the block grant project. Uh, the distance learning project invoice is seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents, this is funded by Carisac Funds. The block grant project invoice is eighty-nine thousand, four thirty-nine, eighty-six, it's funded by, uh, DHCD Block Grant. I would request approval to pay both invoices. Also, would make note that Scott County Telephone will be submitting one more invoice for each project, uh, to bring it up through, uh, for the billings for December, and that will close both of the projects out.
Motion to approve. All second, got a motion to approve, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I bring something up to that? Do you care if I can give the public and the media a little overview of the grant that Scott County Telephone got, in conjunction with Lenoisco last week?
There's mega bucks on the table, I, I don't remember the total amount that was available statewide.
Twenty-two million?
Yeah.
Too many.
But, uh, well, that, that wasn't statewide, that's our portion.
That's our.
Yeah.
But it's like seven hundred and some million dollars that was available statewide, uh, for broadband expansion through, uh, federal assistance. Uh, Scott County Telephone partnered, uh, within the Lenoisco Planning District, LeWise, Scott Counties, and the City of Norton, they submitted an application which basically would provide service to every household in, in each of those, uh, counties and in the city, uh, for any area that doesn't already have broadband service. They were successful, they got the full amount of, of, in excess of twenty-two million dollars, uh, in that grant account. It won't happen instantaneous, I, I'm not sure what the time period on it is, I think it's three to four years that they have to complete that, uh, but, uh, within that three-year period, hopefully, we should be able to at least make broadband available. Doesn't mean that every household will take it, but to make it available to every household in the county.
We'll definitely take it. Okay, uh, next is actuarial evaluations for audit requirements.
Matthew and I, he, he's a gentleman with Scott County, we were having conversations the other day in comedy, and he made them, and what, probably the only good thing that came out of COVID was getting broadband in rural areas, and, and that is definitely down there. As for the actuarial evaluations for the audits, Mr. Chairman, you have a copy of the proposed agreement with Millen Incorporated, we've used them in the past to do similar, uh, actuarial val- evaluations for us. Uh, this is to complete the July one, twenty twenty-one actuarial valuation for the county's other post-employment benefit plan. This evaluation will be used to satisfy governmental accounting standard for Statement Number Seventy-five requirements for fiscal years ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The total cost for the work and the report for the Gatsby seventy-five disclosure report for both years is ninety-two hundred dollars. This is a mandatory requirement for completion of the annual audit report. And I would request approval of the contract, or of the agreement.
Motion to approve the agreement with, uh, Millen Incorporated. Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Next, we got. Next, we got grant rider contract.
I failed to get this in the packet last month, slipped it up on me. But the current grant rider contract with Mr. Boss expired November thirtieth. Uh, the original contract was signed December first of twenty eighteen with a one-year term, and an option to extend that agreement for two one-year terms, which has been done. The original agreement, uh, included the Lee County School Board, but they dropped out after the first one-year term. If the board wishes to continue these services, then a new contract will need to be approved and signed, the current payment for these services is a thousand dollars per month.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to that.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, previous board hired Mr. Boss to, to do this, I think he does a good job, I've never had anybody complain about him not getting back to them, about trying to get a grant. He's doing subject to airport that he doesn't have to do, we don't pay him to do, we've given every, and he's technically not a county employee, but we've given every county employee a raise for cost of living in the last year, we paid him a thousand dollars a month, I would propose that we pay him a thousand fifty a month, I know it's not much, it's five percent bump, but, last edition, I want to see what the rest of the board thought about it.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, I actually felt to, to, to look at his contract being up, because I got him working on something I'd write down for, and I'd already call him.
Well, he's, he's still working, I, I'm not, we, we've already paid him first, that probably put him on that.
For those, yes, we approve, we're trying to work on a grant for that.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract tracking for Robert Boss for a thousand fifty dollars per month.
Second.
What, what, what term do you want? Do you want to make that a one-year term again, include one-year renewal?
I, I would never have a renewal on something like that, if you do a bad job, you can, I mean, who, who has the option to renew him, us both?
It's, uh, it's at the county's discretion, basically.
Well, I mean, we have the right to negotiate it at the end of the year, but I, I don't see the point in it. I don't see the point in it. I would just have a one-year term.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Town Saint Charles Charter.
Chairman, this one's for, for thought. We've sort of left the time creep up on us, but I just wanted to get you thinking about a possible course of action to resolve the matter of the Town Saint Charles Charter. The town has had no city mayor or council since June 30th of 2016. The individuals that were elected in the 2016 election were not sworn into office by the prescribed time. Therefore, did not qualify to serve. In the 2018 and 2020 town elections, there were no candidates who filed with the Red Star's office, and there were no votes cast in the election. The next prescribed election for the town is in May of 2022. However, action of the 2021 General Assembly requires towns to move their elections from May to November to coincide with other local elections. The county has borne the cost of the past three town elections as there's been no council, no town staff to collect revenues, approve payments, or conduct town business. State code does mandate that an election has to be held, so it leaves no choice but for the county to bear the cost of that. The last information that we received from Delegate Kilgore's office when we were trying to get the General Assembly to take some action, Legislative Services Division advised them that the town's charter was not issued by the General Assembly, that it was actually issued by a circuit court action in 1914. And therefore, they're saying that they don't believe the General Assembly has the power to act on it, that they will have to go back through circuit court. And there's, and unfortunately, and that's the quandary that we sort of find ourselves in, there is nothing in state code that advises how, how you approach that or who has standing to make that request through the circuit court. There's a procedure that, that a city town council can act on to vote, to nullify the charter and request that it, that it be nullified by the General Assembly. That action has to be taken by the town council, and there is no town council. And so it, it, it sort of falls into the hands of the county, but there's nothing, there's no jurisdiction in state code that says the county has the authority to file with the circuit court, but the county's having to bear the expense of the election. We don't, this board doesn't have the power to change the election cycle for the town, which is mandated at this point by the General Assembly to be moved to November. So I, I don't know exactly where that leaves you, but according to what, I did talk to the circuit court judge a little bit about what standing she thought the court might have in taking action on this, and she was a little bit puzzled by it, not having heard that before.
So has, has the legislator, one of ours, told us that they will not introduce the bill? Because I think that our previous vote was for us, for your office or Stacy's office to work together to draft the bill for them so they could just prefile and introduce the bill. So, I mean, who's from the Town of Saint Charles is going to say, no, you can't do that if the General Assembly passes a law to dissolve it?
Well, that's what I think, but they, Kilgore's office kicked it back to us previously. My discussion of this came when his legislator, they notified us that he was, he was moving to another job. That was last month. He identified who the new aide would be. I told him to bring him up to speed on the Saint Charles issue, that we needed to get some action taken on that this General Assembly session in 2022. He responded back, you're going to have to go through circuit court, that's what they told me. Now, I haven't talked to Pity's office.
I was going to say, I have, but it's been several months ago. And my understanding from him was, was just that, that it hadn't been done by, you know, through the, through legislative action, that it was the circuit court, but that they still felt there was an avenue for them to do it, that, you know, they preferred we go through circuit court, but if we felt that that wasn't going to be successful or the right way to go, that they, that there was still an avenue for them to use. And that was true.
Well, the thing that I've always thought was, the General Assembly can do what it wants to, when it wants to. They, they make laws that localities have to abide by, and they can change those laws at their will, not ours. And I, again, I mean, I'm sure the county could file suit the circuit court, but legally, I don't think they have standing to do that because they have no code section to back them up.
The thing about it is, we're responsible for it, because we're paying for the leverage. And there ain't even anybody running it.
And they have $27,000 in the account that's supposed to be, it's supposed to go to the town, it's just sitting there.
Yeah.
And it just keeps building up.
Yeah.
Well, my suggestion is either the legislature needs to, to draft the bill, pass the bill to get rid of the Town of Saint Charles, or they need to lay out the methodology of how you go about dissolving of the town where it doesn't, there is no board. One way or another, they've got to pass the law, they might as well just try to pass the law and get rid of it from the first place. And if somebody doesn't like the law, then they can file suit the circuit court, or give up, fix it. But either way, there's nothing that we can do.
Let's see if we can get Pity and Kilgore together, get the bill entered to both sides.
I'll do, just email them to get, you know, copy both of them on it, go from there. Because like I said, that was my understanding from Todd's office, was that it could be done, but that was the, you know, the way to go about it.
What's the date for filing the bills? There's, there's a deadline, it's quickly approaching.
Yeah, it's quickly approaching, and they, there's a method for them to still take some stuff in all up in January, even after section is started now. How, how, how far they can go on that, I don't know. We've, we've tried to make contact with them this week, before.
Yeah, I'll get something out.
It'll be in days.
I'll get it.
Thank you.
So let me make a suggestion, because we're not going to be doing it until next month, and I don't know when we need to have something completed. But if we're on some kind of deadline with Electoral Board or Red Star's office or whatever, and maybe we can answer whether or not we are, Dan, but if we are on some timeline that we need to get something done now, I guess maybe we could authorize Stacy to file suit if our delegate sends her say that they can't introduce any kind of bill on it. Are we up against any kind of deadline?
Other than just to get the legislation in, that's the only thing. I, the Red Star contacted me a couple of months ago and said, you know, here's this bill, they want to know about the Town of Saint Charles. And I said, we're not the Town of Saint Charles, we can't change, we, we don't have the power to change their election cycle. They have the power to do that, but no one's voting any, we're the one conducting the election. So I assume we can just move it to November, which would give us additional time anyway. We wouldn't have to vote for a may election. But hopefully, we can get it resolved before that happens.
Yeah, I think some General Assembly needs to take a.
So I, I don't see any point to take any action on the electoral side.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to temporary adjustments to convenience center operator hours.
Yes, currently, we have, we've had in the past what we call floaters that, that serve as needed at convenience centers. If the normal operators were not able to be there, but we currently have none of those. The ones that we've had either quit or they've taken jobs at sites where there's been a vacancy. So at this point in time, the Southwest Superintendent has requested to have the flexibility to temporarily increase existing convenience center operators' weekly time to allow them to open and close the site that's near theirs if, when that other operator is off or if there's an opening there for a period of time. This would only be done on an as-needed basis. It would probably amount to no more than four or five extra hours per week, but it would eliminate the need for transfer stations while we used to log extra time going to and from these sites on a daily basis to open and close them, which typically results in comp time. So it would be a cost savings overall for the county.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good idea. Motion to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we've got reports and recommendations from the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I was contacted about lunchtime today by Chuck Slimm, Commerce Attorney for Wise County, regarding a pilot program that's going to be instituted in South West Virginia.
Chuck Slimm?
In South West Virginia, a long portion of Northern Virginia, for parent representation in foster care cases and legal cases. My understanding, and maybe you can chime in, Sidney, because you said you had spoken to you, but my understanding is that this is a program that will be fully funded through federal funds. They're not asking for any type of matching funds from localities. What they're seeking is a resolution in support of the program itself. Initially, they think that it will be about a two-year program, possibly up to six years, depending upon how it goes. Funding position of three attorneys that will handle nothing but foster care cases, something similar along the lines to legal aid, essentially. But again, they're not seeking any, any matching funds, it's just a, a resolution in support of the program itself. Wise County has agreed to step up and provide office space within their courthouse for it.
For all three teams?
Yes, well, he said right now that it was Wise, Norton, and us. He hadn't heard anything back from Scott, not that Scott would be included, but he hadn't heard anything back from Scott, but that they would, they were offering office space for the program.
I think you need a good program for Lee County also. Say, please.
And it, and it will encompass, according to him, it'll encompass the entire circuit, which would be Lee County as well. But you have a copy of just the executive summary of the program itself and then the proposed resolution in support of it in front of you.
Does it need to be a number on that?
Well, that was just what he had sent to her, we'll change that into that format.
And he did apologize. He said he thought he had sent this several weeks ago, when it crept up on him today and he realized he hadn't. So it was not his intention to, to be last minute with this. But it's something that if we're going to, to pass a resolution, it doesn't have to be that.
I'll make it, second. Got a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have.
Okay, reports and recommendations from county administrators.
I do have some. First item, and this just came in yesterday, so didn't have much time on this, but we have been notified, had an opportunity last month to make an application to the Federal Aviation Administration, some additional grant funds became available. This is called the Airport Rescue Grant. It's in the amount of $22,000, not, not a lot, but this one is a little, a little bit different caveat. This is to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic. Funds may only be used for purposes directly related to the airport, but they can, those purposes can include the reimbursement of an airport's operational expenses or debt service payments. And in looking at that, it could be over a four-year period from the date that you accept the agreement. So basically, we could reimburse utility bills, things of that nature, which we could beat that up. I've looked at our annual expenditures for phone and electric and things of that nature. We'll have no problem recouping the full $22,000 amount. So I would request, this has to be done electronically. I, I would need to sign off, and then the county attorney would need to sign off, but I need authorization of the board to be able to sign off on the grant. And this has to be done by January 16th or Wednesday Friday.
I'd make that motion submit to Stacy's review and approval.
Second. Got a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This other one, don't, I'm just the messenger. I do have a current invoice from the assessor, if I have any, right now, which they are paid, they will pay progress payments, that's how their contract was written, that's how all of our reassessments have been done over the years. You make progress payments to them during the course of the reassessment based on the number of parcels of property that they processed and completed the assessment on. So at this point in time, he is submitting an invoice for the 224 additional parcels above the $10,000 parcel amount that we included in the contract. And also, they were to be paid for valuation of mobile homes based on the number that, that was processed, that is $3,171. Total amount of this invoice is for $35,749.35. Now, we'll tell you, there's a couple of other invoices that he has submitted. They're not due yet because they're simply repaid. When we make the progress payments, we withhold 10% of that as repayment until the project is fully completed and that's not released until after that time. So the request tonight, he had, he had sent an email yesterday wanting to know the status of this invoice. It was received November 19th, and I advise that it would have, have the board's approval before it could be paid, so.
Mr. Chairman, as I think I alluded to earlier, we've got some things to go through with our council about the remaining payments of this company. And I think that we should talk about that in closed session, about what she advises regarding that, and make some decision after talking to her.
Yeah, I feel with that. I agree. Food, cake, and dinner. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, I had a request on the agenda for closed session. It's listing investment of public funds, actually more acquisition of property. I have, I have an item to discuss with you on that. Also, I have a couple of items for closed session under personnel. And then I've got a couple of other items, but I think we'd probably take those up after closed session. Nothing major.
So is that from you for right now?
Yes.
Okay, reports and recommendations to the board.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday, Mr. Hope comes down, we've been, I want to discuss this with the board about the outside basketball court there, Tom, as well. And he came down and we looked at it, done some measurements, talked about it all. What we really need now is somebody to give us an estimate on what that costs to do, but try to get that up and going. I don't, I guess you could go with glass, whoever, maybe just put it on a pallet of paper and advertise for somebody to come out and give us an estimate on that and see what we're wrapped with it. But we did, he did come down yesterday, we've done some measurement, talked about the fence and the lighting and all that, and one of the whole package. So I want to make the board aware of that and get some estimates on that.
Well, as I mentioned yesterday, what I'd hoped to do is bring Mr. Calloway down there and lay it out, maybe let him work on materials cost, because he can look at the site work for the grade and some things like that, and get a pretty close estimate on that, and look at materials cost. Now, the labor's factor, we'll have to come in with, but we probably have to work off of that. If we ask the local contractor to give us an estimate, the project may be that it'll exceed the value of what our procurement limit is, and if they were to give an estimate, I'm not sure we could allow them to submit a discount on it if they're providing estimates to begin with. I think it would be better and cleaner if we tried to develop an estimate with Allen's Lally, the red contractor, unless they're not going to be in.
Yeah, I think, I think.
I, I talked to one of the major contractors in the county, and they said that we would be under $25,000 for a term key product on that. Now, we didn't talk about building the fence, but transfer station builds fences, not always, but they do some fence work around the dump site. So that takes us under $25,000, takes us under the procurement. I think probably what we should do is talk to, to the local contractors. My preference is to give it to a Lee County contractor. If somebody from Lee County submits on it, it's reasonable price, I would run to them, do it, and some like. So my thinking is, if we, if we call around to contractors that are capable of doing that, and the consensus is that they can get it done under $25,000, that we advertise it in the paper. And, and I think we can just say we're going to give preference to someone local. Maybe there's something Stacy needs to look at, but I think if you're in the procurement threshold... something Stacy needs to look at, but I think if you're in the procurement threshold, you don't have to go with the low, the low person. And I may be wrong, it may be something you need to look at, but that's kind of my, my thoughts on it. And as far as what is there, you're talking about, do they give an estimates on what?
I, I was the one that suggested that I involve him to get, to just do a ballpark estimate on total cost. Now, the fencing, we could do, I had suggested that possibly we anchor the fencing in the concrete to make it a little more stable. That will require some work on, on part of the contractor to, you know, to have the sleeves that are to be able to install it that way. But, I mean, we, we can approach it either way.
Is there not a grade or something that you won't fence around?
Well, the, where the court says, a grade.
If a ball goes 10 feet off the court to the east, it's about 45 feet below you in a ravine.
Or two.
Well, that's what I was getting at, was it's.
Yeah.
Probably one, one side of it needs fence, the other side's flat off of it, but maybe two sides of that. Well, you got that one side there, that one side there where the kids things are at, the slides and all that, you gotta have fence service. You have kids that have plans.
We were looking at tying it into the existing fence of the pool on one side, so you'd only have three other sides. But the opposing side from the pool is that, it has to be there. So I would just tie it together with the other, with the other two, just to, just keep everything close.
Three sides. At the airport meeting last night, Dane, there was something, you were taking notes, and I said, make sure we take that up at our meeting tomorrow, and I don't remember what it was.
And, and I think probably we need to take it if I close session.
After close session?
Yes. I've got enough time.
The works program, I don't know if y'all noticed, but they painted the main staircase that area, one side was black, the other side was tan. The guy did a pretty good job painting that. I've talked to him about some other areas, such as outside the general district clerk's office. I think when they moved from downstairs to upstairs, I don't know who moved it, but they painted the walls up, it looks terrible down through there, and it's in an incredible hot green color to start with. I asked the works program to get some paint samples, ran them by Diane, the general district clerk, they, they both picked up the same color. I wanted to get the board's approval to allow the works program to paint just that section from the back staircase up to the, to the first bend.
Well, let's just do the whole corridor, up to the metal doors, so make it all think of it.
In all honesty, my, my fear was, are they capable, who do they have that's capable of doing it, and will they do a good job?
Well, if they can't, we don't want them to do the other.
Well, we won't know until we try them.
Well, we can start them and then make the election, but, but I would do the entire corridor if, if they can do a good work.
That's what I'm saying, if they, if they can do it, fine, but for now, give them the green lights, do this as always, see if they're capable.
Right.
What, what do y'all think of that?
That's, that may go with it. That all right?
It matches the floor.
Green, I get it.
I, I make that motion to have the works program do that.
Second. All favor? Any opposed?
I didn't have anything else, I was going to request a close session.
Yes, I got a recorded proposal.
I got a question on what we did and the transit, the maintenance we did last time, the, the transaction we.
Are you talking about the community centers?
Yeah, the community centers, yeah. Yeah, what did we do?
Each community center about $1,000?
About $1,000.
About $1,000, okay. And those transactions, those, have, has that money gone now?
Yes.
It has gone now?
Yes.
When did it go out?
It's not?
It hasn't?
I thought it had.
That makes sense.
We'll check.
They, they have.
I thought they'd gone out. We'll, we'll check, make sure they go out.
Okay, good.
Okay. Second. Do you want to read out what? I like your motion to do a close session, two points, there's 37, 11, 81, for personnel, three, acquisition of real estate, disposition of real estate, six, investment of public funds, and eight, consultation and proofreading.
That's a good one. Second. All favor? Any opposed?